I like to call this regular council work session and regular meeting to order. Where is from the silence? Let's remember two people first. Yolanda LaSalle, who passed away, I think she was Bristol Borough's oldest resident, and she was going to be 106, I think in two weeks. We had Yolanda up here when she was 100 to honor her, so let's remember her in your prayers. And let's remember Councilwoman Betty Rodriguez, Mother Santa Montero, who suddenly passed Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gill, do you want to do a roll call, please? Mr. Pezza.
Here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Gorman.
President.
Ms. Figueroa.
Here.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Petrocian.
President.
Mr. Giuseppe.
Here.
And while we're discussing a couple people, I'd like to have everybody remember, last year we honored Katie Hill as Katie Hill Day in Bristol on her 90th birthday, so Katie will be 91 this month, so everybody in Bristol, if you see her or wish her a happy birthday, she's a great person. Happy birthday, Katie. And Mayor, you have something for Joe?
Yeah, I'd like to just wish a happy belated birthday to Joe DiMaggio. Joe DiMaggio's birthday, he turned 99 on September 28th. Joe is a lifelong Bristol Borough resident, he was the former owner of County Kitchens, a volunteer with the Lions at the Italian Day. And Joe is a war hero. He was a World War II Navy veteran who served in the Battle of Normandy, and I just wanted to wish Joe a belated happy 90th birthday.
Can I just add that?
Yep.
I just wanted to mention that he is also the oldest living lion.
Right.
Yeah, he was honored, I guess they had something for him about five years ago, four years ago, and he was the oldest. And they actually said, oh, we'll bring a award to you. He was like, no. And they had a lot.
But we had him, I don't know if you remember, him and our camaraderie up here.
Yes, I remember that.
And we honored them.
That's.
They had a ball that night.
Yeah. So sorry, nothing else to do with your things, but.
Okay, so we have, we want to recognize and congratulate Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church on their 180th anniversary. So we're going to bring up, I don't know who's here from the church, want to come forward? Does anybody else want to come up? You're more than welcome. Come on.
Might as well come up, come on.
180 years.
Good, good. So we have a presentation for you this evening to honor your 100th, 80th anniversary and its best wishes and congratulations from the Borough Council Mayor to the Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church on their 180th anniversary, October 2nd, 2023. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Well, I do have some things to say. I first want to say it's a privilege and an honor to stand on behalf of the Church to receive this proclamation, and we're excited. We've been working on this and building up to this, and we have our banquet scheduled for King George on Saturday, and we're going to have two services on Sunday. We're inviting you all to come join us, one or the other, 10:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the afternoon. And I'm going to put in the punch, we have a banner that we need hung, and we've been trying to get this banner hung for about a month or more. And I brought it with me, and I'd like to leave it if you're so willing to get it hung for us. We would really, really appreciate that very much.
You can leave it with us, and we'll talk to the Borough Manager for you.
Praise be.
Congratulations again.
Okay, we have our historic Bristol Day people here, Mary Jezewalde and Nick Rizzo. Want to go to the podium?
Well, thank you. We just wanted to highlight a couple things going on on our 47th Historic Bristol Day, which is Saturday, October 21st, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We, of course, cannot list everything, but here are a couple highlights. The schooner North Wind will be back along with the antique and classic boat display at our beautiful Wharf and Docks. Ongoing entertainment throughout the day will be at the gazebo, Rackliff Street, and at the new Riverport at Market mural. 11 o'clock, we'll have the River Drivers. 11:30, Men of Harmony, which will be strolling, beginning around 12 o'clock. 12 o'clock, there will be a Patsy Cline impersonator, Lisa Lyman. 1 o'clock, Jillian Ashcraft's jazz trio, and at 2 o'clock, our beloved Bracken Cavalier drum and bugle corps. Face painting, sand and hand art, and a soap walker balloon maker will also be on the 200 and 300 block of Rackliff Street along with the craft vendors. Food vendors will be set up behind the Riverside Theater. We'll also have the house tour, which a ticket is required, that's $12 in advance, $15 a day of. You can purchase those at the tax office, great IDs by Ann or Mignoni Jewelry for advanced tickets. And the houses that will be open are Linda and Ed Kuzma's home, along with Erica and Gary Bennett's home, both of them are at Riverview Circle, the new development, Rackliff Court. Wade Funeral Home, 1002 Rackliff, will have a Nutcracker display. And Gazirona Funeral Home will be open at 4:30 Rackliff with a Barbie display, thanks to Mary. On the driveway, on the driveway, will there be a life-size Barbie box where you can have your picture taken and enter our Bristol Barbie and Bristol Ken contest. So we'll put more information about that on social media.
Okay. I'm going to follow up here. New this year will be the first ever Bristol mural arts tour, leaving at 11 o'clock and again at 1:30 outside of the Riverside Theater. A docent-led bus tour complements of the Bristol Borough School District showcasing, believe it or not, our 10 murals, including our newest on Market Street. And thanks to the generous offer from the Grundy Museum, the Historic Bristol Day Annual Tea will be on their South Lawn, and a ticket is required for that. The museum will be open all day for tours of the beautifully renovated home of Senator Margaret Grundy, and the artists of Bristol will display their artwork on the North Lawn. The Children's Corner will be back at the Grundy Library this year with a performance by the Dancing Divas of Bristol at 11:15. A Touch of History Wax Museum by Snyder Girardi's fifth graders at noon. An explanation of Bristol's landforms by St. Mark's fourth graders, and a hands-on STEM activity by Salve Chemical Company scientists. Cops and kids will be distributing free books to any student who stops by, and the student artwork will be in the library on display. We will again have the car show at the Snyder Girardi School. New this year, people will be able to vote for their favorite cars using a QR code and their phone. People's Choice trophies will be awarded at 2:45, followed by an old-fashioned cruise at 3:00. The Bethel AME Church at 260 Wood Street is celebrating their 180th year of operation, and they will be kind enough to open their church for tours all day during Bristol Day, along with other public buildings such as this gorgeous municipal building, the Bristol Borough Activity Center, the Friends Meeting House with an archaeological dig, the Bristol Lodge, St. James, and the Zion Lutheran Church will be giving lectures about their organ. At 11 o'clock, we'll have a tour guide lead a group up Rackliff Street discussing our rich history, all the way to St. Mark Church, which will be open that day. So we're hoping for a beautiful sunny day so that we can all enjoy our little gem of the town. Thanks to our wonderful committee of volunteers and to all of you for your continued support. Come for the Bristol, come for the history and stay for the fun. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Before you leave, we have something for you, so Mr. Gorman has a check he would like to present to you and Nick on behalf of all you do for this town and for Bristol Day.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
For your continued support.
Thank you. Okay, we have a check also for the Christmas parade under the direction of Alan Scan Sella, but they couldn't be here this evening, so Mr. Gorman has the check, and he'll make sure that they receive that check. We either drop it off or we'll mail it to them. We also have a presentation by the Executive Director of the Grundy Foundation, Gene Williams, on the update of the Grundy Library and Museum.
Council President De Giuseppe, council members, Mr. Mayor, administration officials and Borough residents. On behalf of the foundation trustees and staff, I just want to say thank you for allowing me this evening to update everyone what's happening since the library reopened on June 24th and the museum ceremonial reopening at our gala on the 23rd of September. During this, yeah, the period 2018-2022, that was the pandemic and construction. I really do appreciate, as does staff and the trustees, the patience and understanding, especially of the neighbors on the 600 and 700 blocks of Rackliff Street, in addition to the cooperation of the manager's office and the Peace Department. Couldn't have done it without everyone there. Also, on the library side, patrons' patience and understanding during the library's prolonged closure were equally appreciated as well. Since having 600 people attend the reopening, multi-visitation has increased steadily. In August, two months ago, we reached our year-to-date monthly high of 6,000. That pales in comparison to our high pre-pandemic of 8,500, but we're getting there. And we anticipate maybe a three- to five-year period to reset on again, but we are making progress. Because of our interior and exterior improvements, which have been well received, now we look forward to everyone knowing we're back in business, both on site and in the community. Just an update, our scheduled library hours are 11:00 to 7:00, Monday through Wednesday, and 11:00 to 4:00, Thursday through Saturday. We look forward to delivering new and creative ways to make our services even more accessible. For instance, we look forward to working with council to enhance in 2024 the Spurline Trail Story Walks that were unveiled during the pandemic. Closing on the library, just check out the library website using the search word Grundy Library for the latest programs and events. On the other side of the ledger, we got the museum. We had 135 people attend our gala on the 23rd of September. That marked the one-year anniversary of the house museums renovations, the Koch House and Sapphola's construction, and the new landscaping and gardening installation. Combined, they are beautiful additions to our campus. In addition, they also add to the charm and vitality of Bristol Borough, I think everyone will attest to that. Year-to-date total visitation for the museum is 1,200, 1,200 for our tours, programs, and events. And because of our busy 2023 end-of-year calendar, we do anticipate surpassing the 2022 total, 2,100. So again, on the museum side too, we see a lot of positive trajectory. Help us get back to our all-time visitation high of 4,000 in 2017, obviously six years ago, and we're counting on, again, on those programs, especially in the latter part of this year, to get closer to that. Check out again the Grundy Museum, using the search word to see the latest calendar of programs and events, and to schedule tours. Registration is required for individual group tours, and they are 1:15 and 2:30, Tuesday through Thursday and Saturday. How do we look at that? But that's the latest update on the library museum, and couldn't have done it without everyone's help here and in the community, and we just look to getting bigger and bigger and better and better as time marches on. So again, thank you. I can't be, I can't be proud enough of what we've done, and again, and to the reception that we've received from the, from the department. Thank you.
I just, I would just like to say that that facility, that was built, the building and the gaslighting, it's absolutely gorgeous. I mean, if anybody, I know it took long and a lot of people, but it's breathtaking when you really look at the architecture and what went on there, and you'd think the building was there forever. And you guys did an outstanding job, and whoever you worked with should really be commended on what they did.
I appreciate that. It was a team effort, obviously, and the idea was to mimic the house, the house museum itself, which was built in 18.
It looks like it was always there.
Built in 1818, yeah. We did receive an award for that too, gaslighting award. So it's beautiful, it adds so much to what we can do on the museum side as far as the fence space. As Mary mentioned with the BCHF, we are hosting their annual tea. We're also inviting artists of Bristol on campus for Historic Bristol Day. That's going to be a really, really successful event for us. But yes, if we can use that ground now to promote education on the museum side, take advantage of what we have on the library side, both exterior and interior, as I said, just the prognosis is just unbelievable.
Well, I know that council supports your program with Mary every year, but we would like to get more involved. So if there's things that we can do to help or financially, you know, it's for the kids and things like that, don't hesitate to ask us.
As I said, council's been very receptive and helpful in a lot of things the foundation does, not only for the foundation itself, but for, you know, the community partnerships that we've kind of put together. So I appreciate that.
I mean, I know Amy and Mary and everybody work so hard, but, you know, if we could do more, let us know.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Michael.
It's nice today to see the nice days, the amount of people sitting out there enjoying it. It's just nice to see it, doing all different things.
Oh, yeah.
Reading paper on their phone, on their ad ads.
And the thing that really, you know, again, during the, during the construction, I made it clear to the neighbors especially that we are open.
Right.
But when we're closed, we're closed. We have cantilever gates that kind of, you know, so it's welcome when it's supposed to be, and it's safe and secure when it's supposed to be as well. So I really appreciate, again, can't say enough about the neighbors being really, really supportive over three years, and it was a lot. But they hung with us, and I think now it's, they really can see the fruits of what we need, what we need soon, you know, all those, it seemed all those many years ago, but it was only really only three years ago.
Gene, are your gates on a timer or anything, and how does that work?
Yes.
They're on a timer?
They are, yes.
Very good.
Yes, as I said, right now, the closing hours are 7:00, so at 7:00, they just casually, they lock. And again, Chief Morris and his group have been phenomenal with incidents that we have had, and we try to nip it in the bud, but as I said, I needed to be responses of neighbors, their, you know, their, what they invested, and I wanted to make sure we were good partners in that regard.
Can, can schools still do prom pictures back there?
Oh, yeah.
How will they have access, is there another spot for them to go through, like?
Well, we always use one of the ramps, whether it be the Penn Street ramp or the ramp by the bus in the library side. And that, I think we've, I think we've had it the last couple of years. So that, you know, that's still something we do and we look forward to. But yeah, so everything is really, really good, and again, I just appreciate your time and all with everything we've been doing on the foundation side.
Thanks, Gene.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, I know you and Amy want to speak on the AOC.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Borough Council for allowing us to update you and the community about the 2023 Bristol Fall Classic. This is the first time that we're doing the Fall Classics since 2019. This year's event is Saturday, November 18th, 2023. The event will be held at the Bristol Borough Public Works Building. The time of the event is 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The ticket price is $60 per person. The catering will be provided by the King George Inn, and tickets can be purchased easily at four different locations. You can purchase through previous normal channels by visiting the tax office in this building, Great Ideas by Ann and Mignoni Jewelry Store during normal business hours, and you can also visit our website, which is www.bblarningcenters.com. It's been tested and it works. At the event, we'll be recognizing Teachers of the Year and a Student of the Year from last year. And the proceeds from the Bristol Fall Classic go to summer camp programs and after-school education for students attending grades K through 12 in all the borough schools, public and parochial. And this year's Person of the Year is Patrick Mulhearn. The graphic on the left side of the screen is a little bit of the 2019, we're going to fix it so it's the Delaware River behind Patrick rather than the Caribbean.
Amy, wouldn't you just say the date was?
November 18th, 2023. And we hope that the council will, council members will come out and attend the event. Absolutely. Thank you very much. And thank you for allowing us to use the Public Works Building. As I always say, it's the most efficient public works building I have ever been in, and I've been in a lot of them. It's nothing compares to it.
It's a beautiful building, I know that.
It's certainly not a cold barn.
Do you hang out in public works buildings?
No. They're out like a river.
Any questions? I think we're good. No, we're good. Thank you.
We had a major fire a few weeks ago in Bristol Borough where five families lost everything that they had, and a lot of people stepped up, Councilwoman Figueroa, the Councilman, Brian Johnson, Mr. Pezza, Lorraine Cullen, Mrs. Cullen, everybody came together before them to really try to help with some outside help. So Lorraine, I don't know if you're leading this or whoever, but.
No, I'm not leading it.
No, I mean, tonight, explain what, you and Maria or whatever.
Yeah, Maria would like to, so would I.
Yeah, but we have.
I know, I know we have somebody.
Reeve.
Yeah, it's on.
He can come to the podium.
Let me just, let me just say something first before. You go up there, Dante. We have a special town, Bristol, and there's no other town like this town. We have people from all walks of life that came to help out with the victims of the fires. I was there the first day with Brian Johnson. I've never seen such devastation. I've never seen people so upset. And I understand it, but they were in shock at first, and then as they started to come out of the shock, they were hysterical. Think about it. You don't have a toothbrush, this is like a basic thing. You don't have toothpaste, you have nothing. And along with all of your furniture, all of your clothes, but when I tell you we have the best town, I can't even explain to you all that has been done. And this fellow right here, Dante Reeves, he called right away, talked to Brian, Brian called me, he called Maria, and we got together, and, go ahead, Brian, tell them what happened.
I'm Dante Reeves. I'm a local business owner, a longtime Bristol resident, I still own my childhood home, I grew up in Spruce Street, 640 Spruce. I do a lot of other events in the community as well, I run my business out of Bristol, I'm located on Mill. But for me, I'm, I'm always trying to fill voids and bridge the gap wherever there's a need in the community, wherever I can add a little bit of value. And when I heard about the fires, I went right to the street, I know these families individually, personally, a lot of them, and Brian does as well. We talked a little bit that day, and I told him, I said, there's something we got to do. And I don't know what it is, I said, but we got to do something. So I talked to someone out of Bristol Township, and they just gave me the idea, they said, do a beef and beer. And I've done a lot of community events in the past, and I didn't know how it was going to be perceived, but the only reason I'm here today is because I, I'm so proud of the community and how a lot of, at least 15 businesses, small businesses in our community, all stepped up and made this event possible. I mean, the councilwomen and myself and the Clinton J. Lewis Lodge, and Councilman Johnson were very instrumental in taking a lot of steps and all the things that had to be done and dealing with communications and putting everything together, but without the community and the business, I mean, besides the anonymous donation that was brought to the families that will change the start of their lives, without the local businesses, we wouldn't have been able to do the event, or I would have wound up funding it myself, which I would have. But I reached out, I didn't spend $1. I put a lot of hours in and time, but all these councilwomen and men, Mr. Pezza as well.
Mr. Pezza as well.
Yeah. I would like to announce the names, I have a list of them if you don't mind. Is that okay?
Harry, you want to do?
Yeah.
Can I, can I also ask you to introduce these ladies that are here, because they did a lot for you?
Yeah, they're from the Clinton J. Lewis Lodge, the Health Lodge, the End of Spruce, and I've reached out to them, I know them a lot. Every time I'm doing events, I just reach out to the community, local businesses, I have better reach in Philadelphia, even though I'm from here, I do a lot of work in the city. So usually I reach out to all my investors and my contacts, and that's how I pool a lot of my events together. But this event was home, and I know this is their home as well, so I just went to our people and our community. And it's not one person, business owner that I asked, I didn't donate something. I left it up to them, I feel like they all went above and beyond, and just selflessly gave their resources, you know, to someone in need, and I feel like that's what our community is really about, you know? And to have it broadcast on a, it wasn't broadcast on a platform, but you felt the energy in that hall that day, it was amazing, you know? And I told them all week, I said, I don't care if we raise a dollar, but we raised $50,000. Our intention was there, we put our resources together with a common goal, and you don't always hit whatever you're intending to do. It just happens sometimes. Our goal, for me, was 5,000 a family. Personally, we wouldn't have done that with what we put together, but when the anonymous donation came in, I knew about it all week, I just didn't know what it was. And then when I talked to Mr. Palmer that day, and he told me that they were bringing six $10,000 checks, one for each family, I was so taken back, and it's just like what this community is really about. And I don't live in Bristol, but my heart is in Bristol.
You better move back, that's it.
That's why my business is here, that's why a lot of things I do are for people in this community, because this community shaped and molded me into what I am. And I didn't always have the most orthodox upbringing, but I'm trying to figure it out, you know, like everybody else, so.
We still like you, we still like you.
But I just want to say thank you publicly, it's the only reason why I'm here today. I love to highlight the groups, for me and myself, I don't ever look for the accolades, I just feel like the businesses that really came together really should be highlighted for their selfless act, and that wouldn't have happened without them. So for me and everybody that was involved, I just want to say thank you.
You agree deal of thank yous also. So thank you, and everybody that.
Budraiser, I'm calling you and these ladies right here.
Actually, I just thought that, because one of the things I would like to bring up, this opportunity for you, and you said.
You may need to go up there.
Want to go to the podium, please?
Yeah. But one of the things, by the, by the. But, um, one of the things, by the, by the way, my name is Nate Zarando. I did the Eagle Scout project for Spurline Trail, uh, local business DJing Hill Street Run. You might recognize me. Uh, at any rate, um, we have a wonderful opportunity to attract tourism and, you know, really bring out the nature in this town. Maple Beach has become a, to put it gently, a junkyard, okay? And I think we have an opportunity right here for a local business to clean that S-word up and, um, you know, properly, you know, get rid of that. You said you, uh, Lorraine, you mentioned for fundraiser. So I, I, like, honestly, it's, it's sad to go back there and see, like, bed frames and couches and like, here we are, we're trying to like attract, you know, people to come in. And, and it would be an awesome opportunity to, um, you know, flush out the nature and also scenic, scenic tours and all that. I, I, not necessarily scenic tours, but you know, like, it could be an extension to, uh, the Bristol Park is which really is supposed to be...
Thank you for that idea. I like that idea. We'll think about it and try to work on it, okay?
I'm going to hold you accountable, you know?
Don't hold me accountable.
No, don't hold me accountable.
I'll hold you accountable. I'll hold you all accountable.
First of all, we don't own anything back at Maple. That's Roman Haws.
That's Roman Haws.
Arkham or whoever owns it.
If you can work with them, then.
Well, they're in the township, so, you know, we don't...
Yeah, that's township.
Whatever's going on back there has really nothing to do with us.
Okay. The other thing I want to bring up, unless there's something...
Can we, yeah, we gotta...
Are we, are we off topic?
We're not finished with this yet.
I thought that transition was a little...
Speaking on a...
We're not, we're not finished with this yet, if you don't mind.
Sure. Yeah, no, I'm not trying to interrupt.
No, I'm just saying.
I thought you wanted to talk about the fire.
So can, can I just...
Go ahead.
Okay, so the Ben Salem Benevolent Union, am I saying it right?
Yes, Benevolent Association.
Association, uh, gave $60,000 to our Borough Police, who then presented $60,000 to the group that is, um, but it was from an anonymous donor. And, um, also, I'd like to say there were several, uh, large checks that came from St. Peter and Paul Orthodox Church, the Clinton J. Lewis Lodge, and Twilight Temple, which is the Elks, which is on 809 Lake Street. And like I said, these women here are from the Elks, and, um, they're really good people. There were also a lot of, um, donors, you know, individual donors as well. And I think this will help the people that are in trouble, you know? And would, would you like to say something?
I sure would.
Want to go to the podium, please?
Excuse me?
Podiums? Just state your name and address.
My name is Darrell Jones, Senior Pastor of the Second Baptist Church in Bristol. And on the day of the fire, we actually were the staging facility that provided a kind of support to the fire department.
Red Cross.
The Red Cross, as well as the Fire Marshals. And since the fire, there's a number of people who have been contacting me and the church to find out, um, who is the person who's receiving donations? And I'm not just talking about, um, clothing, talking about monetary donations as well. And so I've been in contact now with all of the families. It was a real problem trying to get the telephone numbers and the addresses or the names of the individuals who were actually affected by it. Uh, today, I was able to finally identify all six households, and I have telephone numbers and names for the six heads of the families. And, um, in speaking with them, they're telling me that they still need a lot of support because they are still homeless. They're living with other people. They're living with friends, and their children. There are a lot of children that are involved in it as well. And so I came here tonight because tonight is, uh, your meeting. And because I know that you're very aware of what took place on Spruce Street, um, I'm here to appeal to whomever it is that's, that's receiving donations so that I can actually put the families in contact with you. I did hear that there were 10, $60,000 checks, or that at least there were the $60,000...
Six $10,000 checks.
There was, there was six $10,000 checks that were awarded for the six families.
And, and we have a person that has the money and is going to contact.
Okay, well...
It's not on any of us.
No.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yeah.
I don't know how to say this, but I think anytime there is a disaster or something happens like this, somebody should go to a local bank, Penn Community Bank, we're just using as example. And you open up the fire fund for the victims of whatever Spruce Street. And everybody donates. They go in a bank or they send a check to that fund, and then somebody distributes this money to them. This way, it's all accountable. The bank keeps track of everything that's going on. There's no miscommunication. Well, who got what? Who wrote the check? I think somebody should really consider, if you're going to keep raising money, go to open up an account at the bank with these names on it, or Spruce Street, or whatever it is, addresses, and just go in and donate. That's the easiest way to handle this. But the night of the fire, I was in contact with some people. Uh, County Commissioner Diane Marsaglia called me and texted me and said, "If they call the Housing Department and say, 'We were a fire victim,' they will try to find them." I know there's a list, but they will try to find them immediate housing. So they need to call, and I have the text here, call the Housing Department. Let them know who they are, what happened. They, they lost everything in the fire, and the housing authority will try to find them housing immediately. So there's a lot of people out there that want to help.
Yeah, right. That's, that's correct. There are a lot of people that are out, out there that do want to help. The Suburban Baptist Association of Southeastern Pennsylvania, they have called me. The Concerned Pastors of Bristol and Vicinity, they have also called. And there are a number of churches around that are also calling or want to help. However, we are not the person to, um, receive all of the donations. And as you were saying, um, yes, you're right. I do agree that an, an account needs to be opened so that all funds can be, you know, deposited into one account and then distributed. However, whoever it is that's in charge of that, and that is something that I don't know. Who's in charge of facilitating the support that these families, these six families need?
Well, I'm reading right here her text that says, yeah, that Red Cross is involved.
Nope. Red Cross is not involved right now.
Well, they were. They gave, they gave them all a certain amount of money the first...
I was here. I knew what they did.
No, I'm, I'm saying this so everybody knows it, not just you. They gave a certain amount of money. I don't think it was a lot. I'm sorry to tell you.
Right.
And it wouldn't have lasted that long, but they did give them money.
What I'm actually referring to is this...
Got to get up there. It's going to take a minute.
So, um, just to speak on what you're saying, um, I do agree with that. Um, so the funds that we did take in, the checks are directly made out to the head of household, to the families, which I talked to the owner of the property. Eric Foreman owned five of those properties. So I have the owners, the five head of household owners. Um, that's who's actually getting the proceeds from the events. So the, the checks that are made out are made directly to them with a letter from them to go along with that. The only funds that are in my possession, which we do have track of, are tickets that we sold that were through cash and Venmo. So initially, we had some donations that were coming in. And to alleviate all that, the few checks that I have and Ms. Cullen has, we asked to have them made to Bristol Borough. So I do have a couple more checks that I brought, everything that we've had. And Councilman Johnson, me and my, myself and him, to my knowledge, were the only ones that dealt with money minus, I mean, and as, as well as Ms. Figueroa and, uh, Ms. Theresa Gill from the Elks Lodge, when we were dispersing the tickets. So it was hard for us to kind of try to sell the tickets. So that's where we opened up like the Venmo and Cash App. But we do have a trail of the, we had 300 tickets. I don't think we sold 70 something tickets, but we did. As well as the money from the anonymous donation, there was almost about another $7,000 that we've tracked to the dollar. There's some other little miscellaneous things that were spent that we didn't even take money out of that. All the money that came in for donations is all going, going to be dispersed evenly to them families. And I have all that money in my possession, and I'm okay with minus the checks that they want to be distributed directly to the families. I was willing to give all the other money to the Borough and have them distribute it until I spoke to Ms. Cullen tonight, right before the meeting. So we can address it and do it whatever way. I don't have a problem.
I think we should, we should get this resolved because I don't know, I don't think the borough should be involved in distributing money.
Yes.
It's just, we're not...
A bank.
Something we should be doing.
Yes.
And I don't want, I don't want anybody to take this the wrong way, but I'm reading more of the text that says they can register on the county site.
Call the housing.
Uh, go to the link, and they can register and say, "I need a home assistance because my home burned in a fire in Bristol Borough." And she's forwarded me the link. So they're aware of what's going on. These people need to contact the housing authority.
And they have issued some certificates already. But the problem is, there's not a lot of housing available.
But I think that...
That is the problem.
That is the problem.
But I, I think that we're, we shouldn't be taking money in or distributing money. It's just not something that we should be doing. So if there's money already in the borough, my suggestion is, did the checks come into the police department? I don't know how this all worked.
It went from the Ben Salem Police Union to the Bristol Borough Police Union to Dante, but it had everybody's individual names on it.
He can't catch them, so...
Yes, it only came to me because I organized the event.
And what we should do, Dante, is write, you wrote one check or five checks?
No, there's six checks. Six checks. They're already sealed.
We should write six checks. We should give the money back to the PBA. You guys issue six more checks, give them to Dante. And any more donations come in, I think somebody should form some kind of a account at the bank.
Yeah, totally fine. Totally fine.
Very easy to do because we did them before for people that had issues or fires or whatever.
And I'm totally...
I mean, it could be run through a church too, if the pastor wants.
Would you like to take care of it?
I'm totally in agreement with that. Um, but at the end of the day, the way I set it up, like I said, was unorthodox because I was just on a...
You're trying to do whatever you can.
I agree. So I was just trying, in the weakest time, to pull everything together and use every resources we could, you know? And at the end of the day, I had no problem with opening up everything that we did.
But I mean, the pastor could, you could fund everything through your church too.
It might be, yeah, I can do that.
If you would like to do that, you could just say, make all the checks payable to, uh...
There's only someone there that's tracking that. You know, I'm fine with the bank doing that. I mean, at the end of the day, you know?
There are, I believe there are a number of ways that we can actually do that. Um, so if Dante and I will get together, that way, I can break down that...
I'm fine with that.
Want us to announce it here? Why don't you come up with a final decision?
I'm fine with doing that again. I even, like I told Ms. Cullen today, I said, I took everything that we had together. We tallied it up. Brian tallied up what he had. We didn't want to disperse anything until we all met, and we talked to everybody to kind of alleviate this and minimize that. So that was the reason why I did it that way. It was kids and people coming to the event. And I told them, I understand. I'm sorry you're going through a hard time. Get all the food you want, but we're not dispersing any money now. It's only going to the head of the households. I don't care about who's in the residence. I can't just give you money. It doesn't work like that. So I made that very clear.
Like I said, I mean, we, I want to thank you personally for all you did. I mean, but I think we need, as a council and a borough, should be handling money for a fund.
If I can just say one more thing, I mean, this is, I think, a natural, um, product of people trying to put things together quickly to help someone. So I, you know, I don't think there's any insinuations of anything other than people trying to help and just get it, and just get it right.
Absolutely.
I'm not taking that.
I know.
Yeah, I'm a stand-up guy. I, you know, I run a business, and I, I understand it.
And I just wanted to say one more time, I, I know that's not why you're up here, but, you know, I've known Dante since he was, since he was very young. And, uh...
Since you were very young.
And to see the, see the man that he's become and the things that he does for this community. And, and he's a strong businessman and a, and a, and a good guy. And, you know, we really appreciate the work that you do.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dante.
Full span.
I just go off the rails.
You want to say something? You have to go up there.
I, I just want to say thank you again to Dante for, you know, putting everything together. It was an awesome event. I was blessed to be there, to participate. And God is good. God provides. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure you will appreciate it.
I just want to make a statement relative to the, the fire and the victims and the handling. Somebody needs to make known to the public who's who. Like, I've gotten several phone calls. I didn't know who to tell them. I just found out from Mary Ellen yesterday about Dante. And I found out by happenstance about the beef and ale. There's not enough information, I don't think, in the community about who to contact if there is help or for the help that wants to be given. That's all I just want. I think it needs to be made clear. Because I've received several phone calls, "Do you know who and who is?" And I don't. And I, and that's what I said to them. Only thing I knew was about the affair that Dante had by way of a deli, but I did pass it on, so...
Can I just say something? It's, I don't think it's a fault of anyone.
No, no.
Yeah, and I know, I know you're not saying it is. Um, initially, when it happened, I mean, that's a shock.
Yes.
And you just try to help them immediately. You go out, you buy clothes, you give them food, and you do what you have to do. And now we have to get it organized at this point.
Yes.
And that's all.
So do we have anybody else in the public that has anything that would like to go to the podium and speak on?
First of all, I'd like to take a moment to, you know, just appreciate the compassionate care that goes into, you know, when there's victims in a fire. And, um, this is going to totally change the mood though, because, uh, I, I do have, I have something I want to bring up. First of all, uh, I understand the, the vision. We're trying to make safe sidewalks. And we're trying to, uh, abide and have spruced up streets and everything. I think the way we're going about it is, um, pretty weak. I think we could do this a lot older. If I had a cupcake, a bakery, let's say. I sell you a cupcake. You get the cupcake. That's your cupcake, right? Some icing falls off that cupcake. Now, a weak person would say, "Hey, you gotta pay for that icing that fell off." And also, you gotta buy icing supplies. Now, a bold person...
Okay, let me just, I want to interrupt you one minute. You gotta get to the point. I, I'm not here to talk about cupcakes. We got a full agenda tonight to discuss. If there's a borough issue you want to discuss...
This is called a metaphor.
Please get to the...
You're, you're intelligent. I'm pretty sure you know what a metaphor is.
I'm just trying to get to the, to the point.
All right, which point?
Go ahead.
Pay for the sidewalks.
Pay for the sidewalks?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your opinion.
Let me answer your question. Okay? First of all, are you bold enough to answer with full integrity?
We get your name for the record. Can you, they want your name for the record and address.
Nate Zarando. You know me.
Who is it?
James. A while ago, you know, I, I did the Eagle Scout, um, Spurline Trail.
What's your address?
From 213 Cedar Street.
213 Cedar?
And what, I'm sorry, what's your name? Can you say it for me?
N-A-T-E-Z-E-R-A-M-B-O.
Nate. And I'm sorry, what's your last name?
Zarando. So it, it's just, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to like lighten up the mood and use humor, guys, because it's like totally ridiculous that, like, I mean, I get it, okay? Seeing from your perspective, you know, there's, there's sidewalks, and we want to make them safe. But to come at people and say, okay, you're, obviously, you know, you're responsible, but then to charge them a fee for, um, you know, not cleaning up the sidewalks, and then on top of that, you know, not supplying anything. You know, we've been paying taxes for years. I, I've been a resident for pretty much all my life. And it's, it's just... And it's, it's just, I'm disappointed. You know, like, I, I vote for you for a reason. Like, it's- Here we're trying to raise the bar, right? I think we can raise the bar a lot higher and show that compassion that we show when people are burned, you know, in the fire and need help, sort of thing.
We have actually brought that up to people, that they can afford to do their sidewalks, that there is an outlet going through the, um, I believe it was the redevelopment authority that will work with people in need. So, so we have to address this. Maybe you weren't aware of it, but we've addressed this for several months now and there are some people that pity. And, and this is, I'm not crazy about the sidewalk, this whole issue, but I can see your points. But I also know that there's a law out there for ATA requirements and we're not violating the rules, just trying to bring stuff up to code. I don't think anybody's giving it a try.
I, I agree with that, like-
Well, anybody that knows who you're charging? They're not wanting to be, if the manager, if they call here, they make extensions on this thing. So we're addressing this problem. It's not, and when you say we should be paying for it, well, you know what? We only get, we're only allowed so many tax dollars that we can charge. And if you look at our budget, our tax dollars don't cover half of our, our expense. So, to add us doing the sidewalks, it's not going to happen. You might think it's compassion, but also you have to be sensible to, you know.
Well, I mean, it takes a responsible, um, man to actually stand up and do the right thing.
Well, I don't know, I don't know whether your right thing and my right thing are the same right things and that's, but I know it's accountable.
So, tell me, what is your right thing?
We have to get on, we have to get on the green.
Can I, can I just interrupt you guys? I'm not gonna sit here and debate sidewalks all night. If you want to talk about it, make an appointment, the manager will meet with you and you can get it all, let him know and he'll get an email to council. But I don't know how to end this conversation tonight because it doesn't, it's not going anywhere. And we have, you're saying that people can't afford it. Mr. Gattroci explained to you, there's a program out there for people that can't afford it. I mean, I fixed mine. There's other people that fixed our sidewalks. If it's a tripping problem, we wanted you to fix it. So I appreciate your comments. Thank you. I don't want to be, I don't want to be rude, but we need to move this meeting. It's already eight oh five. And council didn't even start their meeting yet. So, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna walk inside, but, uh, I'll, I'll set up a meeting. I appreciate you listening, like, then my frustration, like, I'm not trying to, like, come across as hostile.
No, I, Nate, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That ends public participation. Okay.
Um, so, I, I just wanted to address a few things. Number one, um, I'm happy to see you on the agenda and I know the mayor will talk a little bit more about it. The, um, the, uh, the app for the parking meters, which also kind of sparked me to remember, you know, sometimes things move so quickly in, in this chamber and this borough that we, we have not taken our eyes off the problem that we know we have, which is parking. Um, so, you know, I know there was a lot of conversation about that around the hotel on Rackliff Street, so I just want to encourage the rest of council and myself to keep our eyes on that and think outside the box moving forward with some options for, for parking in this town. Because as we continue to grow, that's an issue that's gonna continue to be an issue. Um, I also wanted to, um, let people know that I and, um, a number of other people, including, um, Mr. Dillon and Mrs. Cullen, we, we met under the underpass and the police and the public works and everyone, met under the underpass, um, on Green Lane, which is something that we've been talking about for the last two or three years, about just how it is not a good situation. Um, and we were happy to have PennDOT there. Um, I will say though, and, and I'm, I'm saying this publicly because I think, I think it's noteworthy that we're doing everything we can do and sometimes we run into a wall of bureaucracy ourselves. I know people see the local elected officials and they, they can get a little frustrated when things don't move and we are equally frustrated. Um, we were told at that meeting, and I know Mr. Dillon disagrees with it, and I know we're looking further into it, that we were told at that meeting that the reason that it floods is something we still have to find out. It's very complicated and there's a lot of engineering that goes into it. But it's a state road, but PennDOT's interpretation of the law is that it's our responsibility to find out what's wrong underneath of that road. Um, I know Amanda disagrees with that as well and our engineers disagree with it, but I think it's noteworthy that, that people know and put a little pressure on PennDOT and state reps and, and state senators as well. Our state rep and our state senator are on our side. They agree. Um, but there's only so much we can do when you run into that kind of bureaucracy. So, that's an issue that, that we have put clearly on their radar as this is a problem that is, it's dangerous as well. And we believe that it's much more PennDOT's responsibility than, than our own. Not washing our hands of any responsibility, but, um, I also wanted to, um, uh, bring up a, a sad reality, I think, that for many it doesn't seem like a big deal, but I'm sure you've all experienced about five to 10 kids who are riding their bikes around town, who pop wheelies and they ride right at cars. And, um, I think one of them might end up getting hurt badly. And I think, um, that some driver, some innocent driver is going to also be the one that hurts them badly and going to pay a significant, at least mental cost with what happens there. I know, I've talked to Sergeant Morse about this, Chief Morse, sorry. And, um, I just-
You've got to notice it.
Thanks Greg.
But I, I know, I know the chief agrees. Um, and I, I think it's really important to put out there now that parents have a responsibility. And I know that these parents have been alerted to this situation. And at this point in time, it's on your hands, parents, to get these kids to stop driving their bikes down the middle of the street and popping wheelies right at cars. I, I know Sergeant Morse, God, Chief Morse wanted to say something, so.
No, we, we have received multiple complaints. We responded to multiple complaints and we're addressing it appropriately through the parents. So hopefully it ends.
Right. And I know, and I know you're doing your best and you've been contacted about it, but I, I just think it's important that, that parents know that they have to take responsibility for this. Thank you. And then, um, last two things for me. Um, I know, uh, Mrs. Cullen and I are on the same page about this. Um, we are in the midst of a pretty big study and proposal about the traffic pattern at the Veterans Memorial, uh, near Finney McGee's. Um, I am not ready to vote for, um, the proposal as it is. I just think it is a very complicated intersection that has challenges that we all know. Um, I do remember, um, when Chief Porter was here, he actually kind of had an opinion. I, I haven't really asked Chief Morse if he had, shares that opinion that while it is weird and it is dangerous, um, most people are pretty careful there and there actually is not a high rate of accidents at that intersection. I don't know if that's still the case. This was years ago when I talked to him about that. Um, but I just, we've been looking seriously at making some changes over the last two or three months and I just don't think we're ready. Uh, and-
And I agree.
And I, yeah.
I don't, I don't like the current outcome. I want to wait and come up with something better.
And then my last, um, my last thing is, uh, I was asked by a certain member of Raising the Bar to, uh, remind people that the brick sale will end tomorrow um, for the mural, um, and the mural, which I think we're all very enthusiastic about. It looks beautiful. And if you want to get your, uh, your name, your business name, your family name kind of etched in stone and, and be part of history there, the bricks are, the sale for bricks are, is over tomorrow. You can check on Facebook. All the information is on Raising the Bar. That's all I have. Thank you.
Chief, I apologize to go to you and the mayor first, so Ralph, you want to go or Joe, whoever?
I'll defer to the mayor.
All right.
He's hoping you'll say something.
Um, I have a couple of things. First of all, I want to do is, you know, I want to commend the volunteers that, that put on the Bristol Ball Classic. We attended every time there's been an event. It's a phenomenal event. But the one thing I do want to mention to the public, which drives me crazy, is that I always hear people say, I didn't get an invite to the event. I didn't get an invite to the, the theater event. These are open to the public. The more people, the merrier. So like, you can like, they mentioned contact, go to great ideas by hand, the tax office, Minion Jewel Resort, go on their website to purchase a ticket. The more borough residents that attend these events and experience what goes on for only $60, you know, we want to see you there. So, the more the merrier, and I just wanted to mention that because a lot of people always say, you know, what are these private clothes? No, they're open to the public. So, you know, thank you for all you do and I'm sure it's gonna be another phenomenal event. Um, I also wanted to mention something real quick about, you know, Gene Williams and the Grundy Foundation. I was there for the ribbon cutting of the library. It was probably the first time I've been in the library in decades. Um, it is an amazing place. For those of us that live in the borough, we take it for granted, I feel like. We walk by it, we drive by it, go inside. There's a kid's center, there's study rooms, there's a cafe, the technology, it is, it has to be the best library in Bucks County. So if you haven't been in the library lately, take a few minutes, just pop in, look at what they've done to this place because it's absolutely amazing. Um, I also wanted to commend our fire department and the other first responders for the way they used the street fire. I will say until the day I die, somebody that can get up from what they're doing at the drop of a dime and go respond to a fire or an emergency and leave their family behind and put another family first, has my utmost respect. So, you know, I thank all the, all the first responders that were there, that took the time to make sure everybody got out safe and thankfully there was no casualties. And, you know, they, they honestly deserve all the accreditation in the world for what they did. Um, I want to thank, you know, Raising the Bar and Bill Pezza for the amazing, beautiful mural. Unfortunately, he was out of town for work. Um, it was dedicated, but that has to be one of the nicest murals I've ever seen and it totally took his, you know, corner to a next level and it's just another great addition to Market Street. I've spoken to Bill and we have a couple of ideas about maybe some other locations or just projects to try and, you know, keep, keep the ball moving in the right direction and enhancing the community. So, hopefully over time, we have some, uh, announcements to make or things to talk about regarding that. I also wanted to mention the fact that, you know, for months we've been talking about the e-bikes for the police and the UTV. They've finally been uplifted and they are in. So you are going to be seeing, um, you know, our police officers riding around the streets on e-bikes and using, you know, UTV even like behind the canal or other, or events. You'll probably see them at Bristol Day. We'll have them out for Bristol Day. So it was a little bit of a process, but again, I want to thank everyone that was involved in that, especially Tina Davis's office and Senator San Serra for the money that they got for us. Um, what else did I have? Oh, two other things. One is, as Greg mentioned, there's a motion on the agenda this evening to amend the ordinance for the meters. Um, what I'm asking for, um, is to raise it to a minimum of a dollar an hour is what it's gonna be. That's what makes the app work. That's what makes it effective for everybody. And, I mean, at a dollar an hour to park somewhere, I think if you go to other municipalities, you'll realize that this is still relatively inexpensive. We have the signs in for the app. We have the stickers that are gonna go on the meters. Everything is ready to go once the ordinance gets passed. So once this ordinance is in place and we adjust the meters, you'll see the passport, uh, signs and stickers on, all down Mill Street, parts of Rackliff. So, download the app and get ready to utilize that as it goes forward. And then the last thing I'm asking for, uh, this evening for council, is I'm asking them to amend, uh, make a motion to suspend the rules and add a motion to the agenda. I'm asking you to do that because in discussion with the police chief, um, I'm asking you to go back to the four-two shift for our officers. So what that means is they'll work four days and be off two days. This will create better efficiency in the department. Um, the officers will work less hours. Uh, they will be more involved in the community because they will be here more often instead of having a longer time off because they work longer shifts right now. They get more days off. They'll be in the community more and more visible. And in addition to that, like from a budgetary standpoint, which we're all looking at these days, we, we estimate that just Kelly days alone, which is a long thrown out conversation I want for the public with, but we will save a ton of overtime by eliminating over fourteen hundred and forty hours of Kelly days, you know, for next year. So that's something I'm asking you to consider this evening. And if anybody has any questions, you know, I'm open for them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is the teacher in the room? Ms. Jez Walde wants to talk to you after this meeting about not going to the library.
I watched a little shot. She went, what?
I was trying to get attention.
So does anybody have any questions on the mayor and the chief's proposal to go back to the four-two schedule?
No, I like it.
And so, when we get into the meeting, we have to vote on suspending the rules, add a motion, and, uh, we're gonna authorize the manager either tonight or first thing tomorrow morning to, uh, give a letter to the union to let them know that council made a decision tonight. Chief, you have anything?
I just want to add one thing. Um, since the mayor took over and since I've been in as chief, we have took on so many projects to better the police department and, and we're going in such a great direction. We have a great relationship. We got the UTVs, you should see that out, or the bikes and then the UTV. I just want to recognize two people that really don't get a lot of recognition because I have a lot of energy and so does the mayor, but we're very busy. So we rely on two very important people downstairs and I haven't taken my foot off the gas in a year and a half. But I just want to reckon, recognize Bridget Cullen and Maria Yezzi. I give them so much work and thank God for them downstairs because we're getting all these projects done. I just want to recognize them. Thank you.
Okay. You have anything else? Chief, you have anything?
That's it.
Any questions for the chief or the mayor? Lorraine, what do you have?
I don't have anything. I spoke too much tonight.
Maria?
Um, I actually have, um, I want to thank Mr. Dillon for, um, and Kevin for putting up the, uh, signs on, uh, the corner of Beaver and Mansion, uh, the, the truck signs. Um, and the light was fixed, so you could actually see, the signs are visible all the way down on my street, uh, in front of my house. So, if I can see it, there's no reason why the trucks can't see it. Um, so, thank you for that. And, um, I am looking into organizing another cleanup, uh, for the North Door. Uh, so that will, once I talk to Mr. Dillon, um, and, you know, get a date and get more information, uh, I will speak on that later. Um, and this is actually for Joe and possibly Mr. Dillon. Is there anything that we can do, um, because I'm getting, uh, complaints about cars racing through Pine Street? Is there anything that we can do to try to eliminate or slow the cars there?
I, I had, we see the same complaint and we put a police car at the stop sign at Pond, or Pine and Headley to try to, because that's what's happening. They're coming down off of thirteen and they're totally disregarding the stop sign and coming down Pine Street. So we're addressing it.
Okay, good. Okay. And that's all I have.
Louis?
Yes, I have a couple of things. The, um, Rotary Club of Bristol today had a golf, uh, a golf outing and is honoring the mayor for the mayor chose to act and it was very, seemed to be, I knew it there at the end, but then early in the day, it seemed to be very, going very successfully. And nicely, they, they chose to, to honor it. Um, at Rotary Gala, I, uh, I mentioned to Gene Williams. It was a very nice event and I'm really proud of our, our chief department. We get to the police- We had two, two policemen there, uh, helping people with bad weather and all. It was, it was trying, but they were very good at making. And Jack was there and he did an excellent job.
Thank you.
And, and I was really impressed with the Wood, Wood Street mural and how many people were there. I mean, for a, an event that wasn't, you know, it's not, it was promoted, but it's not like it's a yearly thing where you say, well, that guy went there. It was packed, you know, and everybody doing, doing it and sort of, it was a bit of a match. Uh, I want to thank the Lions for having a valuable day, although they got cut short because of the, uh, the climate weather and the hurricane prediction and everything else. I want to thank, uh, thank them also.
Michael?
Uh, yes, I just want to, again, say, uh, if everybody could just keep, uh, Councilwoman Betty Rodriguez in your prayers, because again, that was a big job. Um, but also on her behalf and myself that, uh, the Bristol Day is coming up. Uh, keep your properties, tweak them, mums, anything to welcome people. Um, happens to be spotlighted in our ward. Um, everybody involved does a phenomenal job. Um, and also the police department, which all has been going on, the presence. Thank you. It makes a difference. Um, and again, just pitch in if you see with all this event coming up, all the events. If you see a trash can that's full or whatever, even if you mention it to myself or somebody, it'll get taken care of because we have a lot going on right now and we want to just keep Bristol beautiful.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So just a couple of things. One, uh, I received a, well, the borough received a letter from Mascara Trash Company. And they're proposing to put in new recycle cans throughout the entire town. It's a bigger can on wheels with a, with a flip top lid. They're gonna, they will, when you put your recycle bin out, they will pick up the recycle cans and place a new recycle cane at your location. The, if the lids break, they'll, they'll be responsible. If the wheels break, they will be responsible. So it's a whole program and a new recycle program that may take place in January. So right now, it's just something to discuss. I want the council to be aware of what's going on. If anybody has any objections or questions or any residents that are home, at home that have any questions, they could contact the borough or contact your council person. I'm going to see if maybe Matt can put a picture of the new, uh, can on the, on the TV so everybody knows what it looks like. It's fairly, it's a fairly nice size. And, uh, my question when they called was, I'm not going to put any more responsibilities on the homeowner. You know, a trash guy rips the lid off or breaks the wheels, who's going to be responsible? They said, we will. So, uh, I think that's good, uh, since they're taking care of all that. The other thing is, I want to mention Betty's mom's, I'm finding out her viewing is going to be Monday night, uh, from five to seven at the Galsarana Funeral Home on Rackler Street. So if anybody wants to attend, I heard that Betty's mom's viewing on Monday from five to seven PM from the Galsarana Funeral Home. And it's, uh, 4:30, I think, Rackler Street. And that's about all I have. Mr. Dillon, you have anything?
Uh, I don't know if the solicitor could touch on the two discussion items briefly. Uh, I just want to point out on the agenda is the curb ramp, uh, award. Uh, the council, uh, rejected the prior bids about two months ago because the low bidder, they meet certain qualifications. You amended the requirements that allowed for more competition. And this bid that tonight, uh, will allow for approximately 64% increase in the number of handicap curbs that, that we were originally projected. So it was a, a good rebid and, uh, I think it's highlighted in, in your packet. So I just hope you want to mention that, allowing more competition.
The other thing I wanted to discuss was, uh, the shade tree ordinance. So the solicitor in our packet put something for us to look at and if we could have discussion on this. I know there's people that want to be involved and I know Amy's one of them to form some kind of a committee to discuss, you know, trees, how far apart they should be, which tree should be planted. So I think by next month, maybe we could get a meeting with a couple of people and then get their opinion and then maybe you could formulate something for November's meeting.
Yeah, I mean, there's just a list of questions or items that I just want you to think about. Uh, and, you know, if you want to email me and ask me questions or whatever. In reviewing the ordinance, I, I discovered that there's a lot of, uh, a lot of gaps where we really don't talk about the height of a tree you put in, et cetera. We really should be doing that, but it's pretty straightforward. There's like six or seven things. Just look at them at your leisure and then we can, we can discuss them and, and we, you know, we'll amend the ordinance if we need to.
We'll try to get some kind of a meeting set up in the next few weeks. Okay? Any other questions or anybody have anything else they need to discuss?
Do you want me to address the Ray Street properties? All right, so, um, a couple of months ago, uh, two property owners who live next to vacant lots that a borough owned, one on Ray Street, one on Cedar Street, approached the borough about purchasing those lots to expand their yard or to create a side yard. And council tabled that, which is fine. Uh, recently, an individual named Chris Russo approached the borough about purchasing two vacant lots on Ray Street. I think they're 20 by 150, one of which is the one where the neighbor wanted it. And he wants to put up a single family home, uh, 14 feet by 50. This is the same individual that council approved that another house on Ray Street, uh, where he peeled it to Doylestown and we reached an agreement that he could build the house as long as he has enough room next to where the twin was. Okay? Uh, so that was approved, but you own these lots. So you have to decide, number one is, not for tonight, do you want to sell them? If you want to sell them, what are the restrictions? Do you want to sell it just to make somebody's yard wider? Or do you want to sell them to let somebody put a single family? Okay. If it's over 6,000, it's got to go out to bid and advertisement. So you can't say, yes, we'll sell it to Chris Russo. Uh, it's going to have to go out to bid. But you have to, you're in total control. It's your property. If you don't want to sell it, that's fine. Uh, but somebody has approached about those two lots to build two more houses. Uh, but we know at least one of them, the neighbor would like to buy it to expand his yard. Um, so think about it and, um.
The neighbor would have to be part of the, as well if, uh?
Well, if it's under six, 6,000 or under, I assume the price will be different depending on what you sell it for. You're going to sell it for somebody to build. I think you would ask for that. If somebody's just going to buy it to expand his yard, you might say it's under 6,000. At which point you do not need to put it out to public bid.
What did you say the footage?
Pardon me?
The footage there, what is it?
The properties are like 20 by 150.
Oh, by 150?
They're all kind of the same.
So it's one property or two properties?
Two.
So one's 12 by 150, one's 20 by 150.
Right, they're right across the street from each other. No, no, they're two separate parcels, one on this side, one on this side.
They want to build two different houses?
Yeah, the guy who, what, built the other one wants to build two more houses. Or somebody else can buy it and build half, if that's what you want.
How wide can a house be?
14 feet. This is what you approved on that other lot. But again, it's your call. You don't want to sell it or don't want to sell it for that, that's up to you. But just something to think about and, uh, you know, you could discuss it with the manager or whatever and what your thoughts are. And if you come to, you know, some consensus, uh, without being together, um, we could, you know, we could put it on the agenda for November.
For a long time, this council has tried to minimize the density. And for us, and, and the only reason we agreed to have that guy be able to build that house is because it went up to Bucks County warehouse and that was the option we were given. Either we come up with an agreement or the judge will make a decision on it. And that's, but as far as selling it or somebody to build 14-foot houses or 16, I'm, I'm against it. And even if we sold it to somebody that wanted to make their yard bigger, what we sell for that reason is that they better incorporate, they better.
Well, it'd have to be deed restricted. That would be a condition.
That, that be a condition would be, that be on, on their deed. That deed would be.
Not, no structure could ever be put there.
Right. And it would have to be sold, uh, not even to be sold separately. It should be melded into the, I forget the term now. The two parcels would make a.
That would be the condition of the sale. If that's decided, you could put it out and say, it's only for expansion of your yard and it has to be merged with the other deed.
But don't forget, we.
I'm not even crazy about that because I think eventually we have to seriously look at some of these areas. If we can use them for parking.
I agree.
You know, and what happened on Spruce Street, we don't slide homes. Because it's dense. And that's where density sometimes can really be an issue. And we don't want to create, we don't want to create problems. We're trying to eliminate problems, so I would be against us selling it unless, unless it's really to our benefit.
I mean, a 20-foot wide lot only benefits, you can't park a car because it's not big enough. So I, the, what happened in the, the last lot, we didn't sell them that lot. They bought it and then we lost in Doylestown because the judge. But these lots we control. And if we're controlling and we deed restrict it and consolidate the deed saying this parcel is one parcel and nothing could be built on this 20 by 150 parcel, then I don't care that next 50 generations can't change that.
Right.
It's got to stay deed restricted.
Even with the parking, I know it's narrow, but if you offer somebody, we kept it and you offer somebody, they can park two of their cars. So, okay, they have to back all of them out. They need the other car. But then you can get four cars on one, from one street and four cars on, from the other street. That's eight parking spaces that really could make a difference on a street like Ray Street or Spruce Street.
Not to mention you add two houses there, then you're not only not solving your problem, you're adding four more cars onto the street.
I think it's a discussion we need to have. Because we do own a lot of property in town that our guys are just cutting grass and maintaining it for really no reason. Because in my opinion, if we can, not for the money, just to alleviate the problems we're dealing with. Like the other day, a car went through the fence on Market Street and the cops were there to get the car towed. That's our property. So now we got to go put up a new fence. We got to fix it. The borough guys were out there. Sometimes we're just getting rid of these properties. They're not buildable lots. And I think if we deed restrict them to say, this is what we want, then, then we control it.
Or make it public parking.
Either or, but you got to have the right size lot. All right, so is that it? Okay. Anything from anybody? I'm going to end our regular work session. And I'm going to open up public participation for our regular meeting. Does anybody have anything they want to discuss? That ends public participation. Okay, number one on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the amendments to Civil Service Rules and Regulations adopted by the Civil Service Commission on September 4th, 2023.
By Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number two.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the awarding of the 2023 CDBG Curb Ramp Project to CNB Construction for $358,800 per Gilmore Letter of September 26th, 2023.
Second by Mrs. Cullen, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table motion number four.
Does he have to read it?
He's got a motion to table.
You don't need a second.
All those in favor? Pose. Motion to table carries, number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the ordinance amending sections 15-502, 15-505, and 15-513 of the Borough Code of Ordinances to allow a remote payment app for the parking meters and to raise the coin rates for the parking meters.
Second by Ms. Cullen, questions or comments? Did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Second by Mr. Gorman.
Yeah, that's what I wanted.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, so we need a motion to add something to the agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to make a new motion. The motion, um, I'd like to make is.
Do you want to add a motion to the agenda?
I want to add a motion.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Katarachi, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, Mrs. Cullen.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to, um, exercise its option pursuant to the paragraph. I'm sorry.
Forty.
Forty, sorry. It's his writing, collective bargaining agent to return to the four-two work schedules for the police department as described in the prior CBA agreement.
Back to my Mr. Katarachi, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Aye.